Welcome to another edition of My Not Matters. I'm Jonathan Starr. This is sponsored by Shock Safe and Lock, brought to you by the Decoden. We're glad you're watching. Today, we're so thankful to have Miranda Schiller with us. You've been on My Not Talk, you've been on a couple of things we're doing, and it's good to do a podcast with you.
I'm super excited to be here.
Absolutely.
I enjoy podcasts. I'm a self-proclaimed podcast junkie.
Yes.
This is one of my, one of my go-tos. I kind of follow you.
Uh oh. But what's one of your favorite podcasts? Besides, it can be local. I'm not looking for a shout out. So that's not where this is coming from. But overall, like your podcast junkie, what's a good podcast that you enjoy?
So, um, man, I'd have to look. There's some, there's some podcasts that I've been listening to that are like story type podcasts.
Okay.
I'd have to look on my phone.
Yeah.
Mike Rowe does a podcast that I really like to listen to. So I do a lot of traveling, not as much as I used to. But podcasts have kind of been my thing. Um, I like political podcasts.
That's fun.
Midwest murders, obviously, that's a local one. But shoot, now you're putting me on the spot and I'll have to remember the name because there are some really good story podcasts that I just absolutely adore. So.
So you mentioned you do a lot of traveling or you used to do more, but now you have a EV car, right? An electric vehicle. Is that gonna cause any problems in your candidacy for Ward County Commission?
You know, it's funny. So, okay, I am also a self-proclaimed car junkie.
Yeah.
You know, my family and I have, we have a one-ton diesel truck.
Okay.
And then I have collected vehicles pretty much all my life. I get it honestly. My dad has a collection of cars as well. So I have a 79 Trans Am and I've got a Camaro Z28 convertible and I've got a Corvette convertible. And so I'm a car person and I actually, I like to go fast. I've only had one speeding ticket.
Well done.
Yep. Actually, I prefer acceleration. I probably could have been a race car driver. So when my last lease was up from my F-150, because I always used to get F-150s as well, my sales guy was like, hey, you should, you should drive this Mustang. And I'm like, are you out of your mind? Like, no, I'm not buying a Mustang. It's not gonna work. And he says, just, you know, try it. It's all-wheel drive. And I'm thinking, what all-wheel drive Mustang are you talking about? And he's like, it's electric. I'm like, no, Trevor, you're out of your mind. You're not buying an electric car. So he brings it over to me. And he says, let's just go for a drive. And I think he probably knew what was gonna happen because I like to drive fast and I like responsive cars. Anyway, um, yeah, I have two blocks. I was like, wow, this is really something. I've had it now for a little over a year. I've had it through the winter. There is some diminishment on the battery, like for, for distance. It's a little bit, it's a completely different thought process. I also love technology. So if something's new, I'm the one buying the technology that's new as well. But with regards to long distance, no, it's not a long distance car. It's good for probably up to 300 miles and then I have to charge. But the thing about it is, is you have to really just learn where charging stations are, that kind of stuff. I plug my car in, in my garage overnight about once a week, once every week and a half. Haven't noticed any increase in my electric bill. And I haven't paid for gas in over a year for that car. So that's been kind of nice.
That feels good then.
Yeah. But for long trips, we take, um, my daughter's got an Escape too. We'll take the new Escape or we'll take the, you know, F-350. Sometimes I'll, you know, jump in the Camaro, go for a drive, longer distances, that kind of stuff. So.
So if you're, this is really off topic, okay? If you're in Florida during these hurricanes, which is devastating, but they're wrapping their cars in plastic wrap? Is that, you're a car junkie? Is that, is that the tactic you would be trying?
So from an insurance perspective, no, I wouldn't do that either.
Just sounds like a bad idea.
You gotta just move your car out. Like you gotta put it somewhere else. Like, it's the same thing when we had the flood here in 2011. You know, my husband was activated National Guard at the time. So he was gone. He was actually had been in James Sound and Valley City and Bismarck while we were evacuated. So it was me with two small kids and all of our stuff. And the, the week, a few days before our final evacuation, maybe even the day before, I could not physically get a three-year-old and an eight-year-old in a car, drive it somewhere across town, because mind you, everybody's doing this. Leave a vehicle there and try to get back to get my Trans Am, which is in the garage. So I got the 79 Trans Am and I'm like, what am I gonna do? Like, do I have to leave it here? How am I gonna get this thing out of here? And just some, you know, random guy that I knew in high school, this was like 30 years earlier.
Wow.
Is driving through the neighborhood and he's like, hey, Miranda, what are you doing with your Trans Am? I said, I don't know.
Yeah.
And he goes, well, I can park it out at my place. I don't know where this guy lives. I haven't seen him for 30 years. And I'm like, here's my keys. Take it, you know? So with regards to, you know, the hurricane, I mean, I feel bad for people. I kind of get it. I wouldn't be wrapping my car in plastic. I'd be just driving it out and taking it somewhere else.
Exactly. Crazy what happens. But great discussion as we begin this. This first question, we've probably already danced all around it, but tell us a little bit about you. We know you're a podcast junkie at this time. We know you're, you love cars, car enthusiast. Tell us a little bit about Miranda.
This is like the hardest, that's why I think, I honestly think that's the hardest question. Anytime somebody asks me, I answer it. And then I think back later, I'm like, oh, I should have said this.
Yeah.
Or, oh, I should have said that. Like, I mean, and shoot, it can go all the way back. I, I, I grew up in the Botno area. I grew up on a farm. At the time, my, my dad was a farmer. Um, my grandpa was a farmer. I spent a lot of years riding in combines and taking meals out to the field. And wait, there was cattle in the family as well. That's kind of where I started out. And then transitioned to, my parents got divorced. I moved to Surrey, graduated from Surrey for high school, went back up to Botno for college. I've kind of been around a little bit. I've done a lot of different things. I actually sold cars for a period of time. I went to college originally for biology and pre-med.
That translates to insurance pretty naturally.
Yeah, not really. Maybe the numbers part of it does. But I found myself in the insurance industry and that's kind of where I am right now. I have a husband who is retired National Guard, Army National Guard. He was a helicopter pilot and did some supply stuff out at Fort Grafton or Camp Grafton out by Devil's Lake. He's been retired, gosh, I don't even know how many years now. We have two grown children, which is weird. I've got about a 23-year-old. He's almost 23. He's out in Montana. And then I have a daughter who is, she just turned 17. She graduated a year early. She graduated at 16. She's, she's really driven. People think I'm driven. She, she puts me to shame. So she's starting college and we have three dogs. I love my dogs a whole bunch. I have two Goldens and a Border Collie. So I spend a lot of time with my dogs. Most people see me and my dogs together. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm a naturally, naturally an entrepreneurial type person.
Right.
I'm always looking for, you know, the next job or career or opportunity. So, yeah, I've done a lot of things.
So maybe nothing that background inspired you, but at what point did politics start becoming something where you're like, I want this to be part of my life?
Okay. So that goes back to like high school.
Okay.
So in high school, you know, there's always the kid who's like the class president and student council president and whatever. I was that person. In fact, uh, shoot, it was the nineties. I was a big advocate for George W. Bush. Actually, that must have been later. Anyway, Ronald Reagan as well, like, this was way back.
Yeah.
My, my grandpa was a big Walter Mondale fan.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. So I was not. And so that's probably where it started is when I was, when I was a lot younger. We watched a lot of polit, politics and things like that when I was younger. Fast forward to, you know, my adult life. Um, I used to, I used to manage bars.
Okay.
So, and Chuck Barney, um, who most people know as the former mayor. He, I worked for his mother-in-law and, uh, he was always around doing things. And I remember when I was managing the fireside, which was the old Saturday's bar, which is no longer there. He was in there one day and he was going through like blueprints and looking over stormwater management. And I walk in, I'm like, Chuck, what are you doing?
Yeah.
And he said, I'm working on a stormwater project. You know, we've got some constituents that are upset with the way the water's flowing. And I, I looked at him and I said, this is what you do on city council. Cause at the time he was an alderman. He's like, yeah, I thought that is really interesting. And, uh, you know, I kind of, I kind of thought, maybe I should do that. And then, you know, fast forward a few more years, I actually worked for Dave Lehner at Minnet Automotive. He was the general manager who, at that time, he was a city council member as well. And he, uh, he said, yeah, Miranda, you should do this. He actually calls me Rambo.
Okay.
Anyway, it kind of started a long time ago and, um, I would say, you know, my kids were young. My time was taken up with work and family and things like that. And then the 2011 flood happened and, um, you know, we had to take our house down to the studs and rebuild it. And I think what ends up happening is everybody has their idea of, hey, I'm busy, you know?
Right.
When you're rebuilding a house, you're working full-time, you're raising a family and all of these things, you really learn to structure your time. And so I did that. I mean, I spent a lot of time working on my house and, and I got really good with time management and probably really good with advocating for the rights of the people who lived in the valley, specifically, um, those of us that were dealing with, you know, the effects of the flood and kind of got naturally asked to, to run.
Right.
And that's where it started. Did I think it was gonna happen? I was gonna get elected? Actually, no.
Yeah.
But it did.
That's, that's probably a good expectation. I mean, it's not something that you felt the word that people might would use is entitled to or anything like that. It's something where if this happens, that's great. If not, then.
That's how I've always looked at it is, you know, if I'm, if I'm fortunate enough to get elected, I'm excited. I'm excited to do the job. I'm excited to learn about it. And again, I go back to, you know, some people are passionate about teaching or some people are passionate about nursing. I'm not the most compassionate type person. I'll be the first to say it. And anybody who knows me well will be nodding along, probably laughing a little bit. But I enjoy public service.
Okay.
I enjoy, uh, hearing perspectives from, you know, two different viewpoints and trying to find a compromise in the middle that's best for everybody.
Right.
So, you know, if I get to do it again, I'm gonna be happy to do it. And if not, I'll probably, you know, hang out in the background till the next thing comes along and try again.
So you've served on, uh, city council, you've served on Minnet Public School Board. You ran a competitive race for mayor.
Yep.
And now Ward County. What's, what's something about the Ward County, maybe that is different than those races, but also stands out as something that you're excited about? I shouldn't say races, the, the opportunity to serve in that capacity.
So I've said this many times too. I'm a perpetual learner.
Yeah.
And I feel like the best way for me personally to learn is to be immersed into something.
Right.
And to get a better understanding of all of the nuances of the job. It doesn't matter if it's, you know, my day job or if it, it's public service. Um, I found that to be the most, um, rewarding way for me to learn things. So having learned, you know, from the, the city side and from the school side, the individual public or political subdivisions, I've always kind of had an interest in the county. It's very different in the fact that the city has a city manager that basically runs everything and the council oversees the city manager and so forth. Schools, the same way, superintendent, the school board oversees from, from the top there. The county is different in that our county specifically, there's only two counties in the state of North Dakota that have a county administrator. Ward County does not have a county manager or county administrator. Essentially, the Ward County Commission, um, gets basically departments that they kind of help oversee. But overall, the commissioners are, you know, acting in that role. So if you, I know you've met with the city manager, imagine five different personalities, five different people, different walks of life are basically running the county.
Yeah.
So it is a little bit on the intimidating side. I gave it a lot of thought. You know, I, people ask me why I didn't get on the ballot right away in June, you know, with the child deciding to graduate early and had a trip planned. I just, I wasn't sure that I was gonna be able to commit fully to campaigning in May.
Right.
Ultimately, you know, things changed. I ran a write-in and here I am. But, um, yeah, I think it'll be interesting if I get elected. I'm excited to learn about it.
Yeah.
I can see some opportunities, um, for the county itself, the residents, and, you know, if I'm able to serve and if I'm able to be one of the five elected commissioners, I'm excited to serve and work with those other people to try to make those changes.
It has to be weird running a write-in campaign because it's not that you're just hoping that people vote for you. You're hoping that people remember your name.
And how to spell it.
How to spell your name. Like, there's so much more, many more variables. Was there, was it any different for you on that day than it was when you ran for city council?
Yeah, it was. So, you know, previously, like when council or school board, you, you get out ahead of it, you're, you know, campaigning, you have signs, there's forums. The craziest thing for me is there, there, there really has been a minimal amount of forums. There's been hardly any, um, questionnaires that come in via email.
Interesting.
Yeah. Every, every campaign I've ever run, we get a lot of questionnaires. I haven't, I've seen one. I think it was, uh, Vote 4011 is the only one that I've actually seen. I think Active Vote might have sent me something as well, but there's been very little, um, for that perspective. And it makes me wonder why, why this race is different in that aspect. As for running a write-in campaign, um, I had made the decision early on that I was not gonna take any type of financial donations. You know, sometimes people want to put money towards a candidate. A few people called. I said, nope, I don't want anything. Um, I've always been really frugal when it comes to, for campaign donations, but I don't want anything. I'm not going to do any big advertising. I'm going to literally print out some business cards and just talk to some people. And if it happens, it happens.
Right.
I'm lucky in the sense that, you know, I own a business and my business is my name.
Right.
And maybe I do have a little bit of name recognition. So, you know, I was fortunate in the aspect that, you know, it made it through. Of the write-in candidates, only one of us didn't because he didn't make the threshold. And he has, you know, quite a lot of name recognition, Zach Ratnerood.
Yep.
Especially on the Democrat side. But, um, yeah, I was fortunate and it was different.
It's gotta be quite the experience there. So you've been part of the forum that was publicly broadcasted, um, the Ward County. Did, so I asked the city council members this question as well, and it's not, the chamber does a good job putting on. I'm thankful that they do put it on. And, you know, maybe in the future years, the Decoden will put one on as well. But enjoy, is it, what's it like sitting at the, at the table there and have everyone staring at you and be put on the spot in that forum?
There wasn't very many people there.
There weren't, there was like 10, 15.
The Decoden actually has done a forum prior to you, yeah, prior to you, that was pretty well attended. But the, the forum on, uh, the, the chamber had put on, I'm thankful they did as well. It gets information out to the voters. That's the most important thing. There was not that many people in, in the audience. Uh, I think I mentioned during the forum, my 17-year-old daughter showed up and I didn't know. She actually, just like, mom, is this at city hall? I said, are you here? I'm gonna come watch, which was really cool.
That's neat.
But there was probably, I don't know, seven people in the audience.
Yeah.
So it was, it was minimally attended. Uh, so from a standpoint of, we talked earlier about me being an introvert. It was pretty easy because there wasn't a lot of people out there.
That helps. It was probably not that well attended because the Decoden was doing our end property tax, uh, or property tax measure four debate. So that, that's probably why. Just kidding. But all right. So as we look at the Ward County Commission and as you begin to prepare for this, what, what are like three of your top concerns or priorities or whatever it might be that you might be calling them as you, as you go into this position that you like this, these are three things we need to take a look at.
So any, any things that I'm, that I am stating is, it's fluid. I mean, honestly, uh, somebody could come to me tomorrow and say, hey, did you really, did you know that this is an issue? And obviously, if I didn't, you know, I'm gonna do a little bit of research on it and, and it could become one of those top priorities. I've always been a big advocate for the critical services that are provided by any political subdivision. I have a tendency to believe, um, a small government is probably the best government. And I have a strong focus on individual liberties and rights. Um, so I like to see smaller focus. That being said, you know, obviously infrastructure is gonna be a big deal.
Right.
You know, we talked a lot about roads. Roads aren't sexy. People aren't like, hey, let's talk about it until the day you need to get out and the snow's blowing in and then it's a big deal. But it comes down to like, you know, maintenance and things like that as well. Uh, safety is a really big deal for me, which we could play into roads. I've done some research by going to some different departments, specifically two of the larger departments, um, in the budget specifically. And kind of just touch base, found out where their needs are. Uh, with regards to public works, Dana's been doing a great job in his staff in saving the county money. We did some discussions about, um, the Southwest Connection Corridor. And the, the needs for the safety of that within specifically the Minnet area. People might say, hey, you're serving the whole county. But, um, that's a big project for the entire county, our region and the Minnet area. And that would basically be, um, having, uh, traffic routed essentially. Right now, let's say you're coming in from the Burlington area and you need to go to the hospital. You will turn and go up Tressle Valley, which is kind of a, a windier road. It's a less traveled road. There's a lot of residential there. If you're direct truck traffic, you're probably gonna come straight in and then maybe turn up and go on 283. What we really could use would be almost like a bypass. So Southwest Connector Corridor that kind of goes from maybe, maybe around the Mesa Arena and loops up and then takes you up to the, uh, I should say down to the south side of Minnet, giving, uh, traffic a more safe path to get around the community and around the city, taking some of that stress off of 16th Street. Cause a lot of people, if they're coming in, whether it be to the new hospital or to the landfill entrance, those people are coming up 16th Street, which is putting a huge amount of pressure on, on those roads. So my focus would be to keep pushing for, uh, safe transportation throughout the, the, the whole entire county with a focus on, uh, um, that Southwest Connector Corridor and getting that completed here as soon as we possibly can.
Yeah. And it's incredible when you think about how large Ward County is. I think our population's 80,000 plus in Ward County, low 80,000s. We were looking up the population of Grand Forks County because I'm an advocate for Chick-fil-A and I was trying to see how metrics of Grand Forks versus Minnet. Cause we're close and Grand Forks County is actually smaller than us. Um, but you get to go all the way up to Kenmare. You get to go, uh, that's probably starting to get to the edge of it. So there's a lot of roads, a lot of infrastructure that you guys have to be concerned about. So a lot more road trips in store for you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I, I, I do tend to take a lot of road trips. I know you asked for three. I gave you one essentially. I don't, I don't mean to, I'm not skirting it. But when, when we're talking about roads, I, I do a lot of road tripping. I actually write a, a monthly article in the Minnet Daily. I, yeah, it's been, it's been a lot of fun.
Do it. Yeah, that's awesome.
But I, I tend to jump in my car and grab my dogs and my camera and, uh, travel around quite often. So I've driven a lot of those roads. And yeah, some of them need a little bit of, need a little bit of work.
Need a little bit of work. So, so, and I bring up Kenmare because one of the questions I was at the forum, it was an interesting question. It was voted down by the voters. And that's fine. And it was about the, the library, combining Minnet Library and Ward County Library, um, essentially. There's other services though, that could be combined potentially. You have courts. We have our municipal court that's only used a little bit each day. Um, and there's obviously a court at Ward County and there's other services like that. Do you think there's opportunity for collaboration between Minnet and Ward County in some of those things?
So first things first, um, at that, um, that forum, it was stated that the combination of the libraries was voted down by the public. And, and I'll be honest, you know, when you're put on the spot, you just kind of, especially when other commissioners are the ones that state it, you believe it to be true. And it was not true.
She's fact-checking me.
Not fact-checking you. But after the fact, you find out that it wasn't actually voted on by the people.
Okay.
It was voted on, there was actually a committee. I did a little bit more digging on it. There was a committee on, um, bringing this idea up. And, uh, there was, there was some suggestions made ultimately, um, the commission, the Ward County Commission voted against it.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah.
Those were the people that voted on it.
Yeah. So when, when I'm looking at it and we'll talk library for a minute. When you ask any member of our community, for the most part about libraries, they're gonna talk about the Minnet Public Library, which is located down in the valley off of Sixth Street down by the police station. That's where they're gonna tell you the library is. There is a library though also at, uh, the county courthouse. The difference is, I think I mentioned earlier, I was a, I was a country kid. Back in the day, we used to get the bookmobile. As a kid, we looked really forward to that. That is by the county, not by the city. So if you're talking about physical libraries, um, most people refer to our physical library. But the outlying communities rely on that bookmobile. So there's a, there's a huge amount of, um, of emphasis that goes on the bookmobile. I would never want to take that away because as a kid I used it myself. But I do think that there's probably room for some collaboration there. And when you talk about from the school perspective, having previously been on the school board, we were getting tours of the new Minnet North. And you walk into the library and even, even in some of the elementaries. As a kid, you know, you used to walk in, there was a library, it was multiple rooms full of books and you had the, you know, drawer you pull out, you find your book, um, the card. All of that has changed. When I walked into the Minnet North Library, um, they said, well, you know, libraries have changed. A lot of the kids nowadays, they're getting their information digitally. They're reading digital books. So there's hardly any books in that library compared to what you would have thought. So, you know, things are evolving. Um, I know a lot of people are resistant to change. The concept of having two functioning libraries in Minnet, I don't know that that's necessarily the most cost-efficient thing. Uh, I think there are some efficiencies that can be gained there. But again, uh, I can't even imagine getting rid of the bookmobile. So.
Right.
Yeah. Long answer short, yeah, I think we can, we can see some opportunity there. And it was not the voters that voted on that.
That, that's a really interesting tidbit. Makes, makes you want to do research on more things, uh, as it, as it should be that way. And the other thing I do want to bring up, and this is one that is under, not a lot of attention has been given to it. Is the courthouse. Like I, I was talking with somebody, the process right now to get somebody to the municipal court. That's in the, they're gonna be bused or however, across town, it's not that far, but there's a little trip that they're gonna go on and then they're gonna get to municipal court and then they're gonna go before the judge and then they're gonna be bused or however back. It's kind of an inefficient process. Um, would there be, and I know that there's a lot of factors at, at play here, but it, would there be in your mind, opportunity for collaboration? That it makes way better sense for it to be at the Ward County courthouse. If those courthouses could work together, um, you're right next to the jail. It's a lot more efficient and things along those lines.
So from the municipal standpoint, that's gonna be people who got like small tickets and things like that. You'll have some of the prisoners that might need to be transported. But it's the same thing. When you ask anybody in the community, hey, where's the, where's the municipal courthouse?
You don't know.
They don't know that it's in the basement of the auditorium.
I didn't know where to go.
And honestly, I think, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on that. Um, I think it comes down to room. Uh, I think that there is opportunity for some collaboration there, uh, with regards to, you know, moving prisoners. It does happen from time to time. But my understanding in a, in a tour I took of the jail is that a lot of the criminals that are housed in Ward County Jail, um, do some of that via online now.
Okay, that's good.
And honestly, that's, that's probably good. That's good for the public to not have, um, the opportunity to have somebody potentially escape or, you know, some kind of interaction of some sort. So my understanding is that a lot of that is happening virtually now too.
I once had a warrant out for my arrest and I didn't know where to go.
So did I.
Epic stories. They're, they're good stories. Um, it was nothing nefarious.
Mine neither. I had a speeding ticket and I mailed it in to the wrong county because the envelope was addressed to Burke County and it was supposed to go to a different one. The cop was helping out with Rockin' the Hills and he gave me the envelope for the wrong county.
Oh, nice. I, uh, I had a parking ticket and, and I didn't pay it. There was some other things that went on, but I didn't pay it. So we were actually, it's a long story. I'll tell you some other time. Uh, it's epic. I, I had a very nervous weekend though. I did not want to get a speeding ticket that weekend. So what are your thoughts on the current budget process? Obviously, so when you talk budget, it's an interesting conversation. If to the informed, they know what's going on. Obviously, you've already mentioned the different political subdivisions in Minnet. But there's four main political subdivisions that make up our budget, our property tax budget that we all feel. Parks, city, Ward County and school. Um, and Ward County ranks number three as far as the most amount of mill levies that they normally raise. What, what's your thoughts on, on the current budget process that goes on in Ward County?
So that's been an interesting thing. Like we talked a little bit about, like I said, you know, superintendent on the school side and the city manager on the city side. The budgeting process from the county is, is a bit different. Um, generally speaking, like, and I'll speak from the city because I know that side. The departments create their budget. They turn it into the city manager. They kind of go through it and then they just, they streamline. It always goes to the council and the council always cuts it. So, I mean, the cuts you're seeing this year are nothing different than most other years. There's always cuts. From the county side, the county commissioners end up doing those cuts. Um, with regards to the mills, the mills necessarily aren't that different than, for instance, what the city is levying, uh, from the county. The difference is the city is only levying on the properties that are within the city limits. The county levies within all of the properties within the county. So, yeah, the number looks smaller, but they actually might be levying the exact same amount of money. The process has been interesting to watch. Um, the budget, like I, I have the budget here. I've been going through it. It's real streamlined. There's, there's not a lot of extra in here. You know, I was speaking with, uh, Paul at the, the jail. We were talking about the budget that the, the county jail has and some of the challenges they've had. And it's no different than you and I in our food budget. Obviously, food has gotten more expensive when they submitted their budget last year. For 2024, in about March, I believe it was, he said, uh, the food vendor who feeds in the inmates within our jail took a, I think it was a 15% increase. And so obviously he wasn't prepared for that. His budget was made almost six months, seven months in advance. And so now he's behind the eight ball beginning in March. And so I asked him, I said, well, you know, coming forward into 2025, essentially, are you planning for asking for a 25% increase? The 15 to make up the difference already, plus another 10 that could happen? And, you know, he said, well, you know, probably not 25, but yeah, I gotta make up the difference. Um, there's not a lot of fat. And how, how do you cut that out? How do you say, hey, we have to cut the food budget for the inmates that were required to feed?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You can't just slice it. So you know, when I'm looking at it, is there opportunity? I, I see a lot of opportunity um, in some departments and very little in a lot of others, so.
So you, you were very brave. You're at this forum and I keep referencing the forum. I don't know why.
It's where you got your most information so far.
Fair.
Yeah.
That, that was a lot of my research. She's calling me out. Um, anyways, at the forum, you go and you say, you, 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 you choose to make an enemy of everybody, well, of two people, of incumbents only. Cause you're like, we need to cut, we need to cut uh, how much the current um.
Health insurance.
Yeah, the health insurance for the current commissioners. Um, I joke, you probably didn't make an enemy of anybody, but what, wha- what's your thought process with that?
So, okay, again, having served in, you don't make a lot of money doing public service. When I was on city council, it was four hundred ninety-five dollars a month. Uh, on the school board, it was six hundred dollars a month. Uh, county commissioners, I think it's twenty-three thousand a year is what's budgeted for pay, which first of all is a lot more. However, you are acting as the administrator for the county. There is more time. Um, and uh, they did not give themselves a raise from my understanding uh, this year. But I'm looking at the budget and I see health insurance. And keep in mind, this is probably, you know, you're probably allocating around twenty hours a week to do this job. Could be more, could be less. It's, you know, just kind of how it goes. And I see um, a line for, I think it's a hundred thirty-eight thousand for health insurance for five commissioners. Now, um, I, I immediately called HR and I said, hey, does the county offer health insurance and benefits to part-time employees? And they said, no, we generally don't. So first thing in my mind is why are we offering? Um, why do we have health insurance for the commissioners when it's not being offered to other part-time employees? And I did make a call to a commissioner just to ask and, and they said at one point they decided to add it because they were having a hard time finding people to run. Okay, um, I can tell you myself personally, I didn't look at how much was paid and what the benefits were before I decided to do it. I, I've never met a candidate that's done that. Um, I think it, I, I, I don't even know if that exists. I, I don't know. But uh, I think that is the first opportunity to get, you know, some, some cuts made. Um, the other thing is, is my understanding, I believe all of the commissioners are taking the health insurance benefit right now. I would not do that. We are covered by my husbands and even if I wasn't, I still wouldn't take that benefit. I don't believe that it is uh, is something that uh, the commissioner should be taking. So yeah, I don't know if I'm making enemies, um, but I can tell you. It wouldn't happen this year because I wouldn't be elected for this year's budget, but I think uh, next year I'm gonna be a huge strong no on, on offering health insurance.
Do you think that comes maybe because um, Ward County, you have for- farmers, you have different things, uh, pe- different people involved that are more self-employed, of course you are as well. Um, and so some of that factors into why that felt like a selling point, because it, it does kind of feel like a weird selling point. I, I could see a frontline three thousand dollars a month being a selling point, but, but health insurance like somebody should, somebody, it is expensive, but you should already have that. Most people should have already thought about that in their life, right?
Or maybe they're getting Medicare. Like, if you're of a certain age, you're eligible for Medicare.
That's fair.
And you know, I, I, I work in the insurance industry. Um, I uh, I just, I have a problem with that. You know, and I, I know, you know, there's other counties that do it. Um, I think that's just something that I see, I see an opportunity to cut from the budget.
Okay, so I wanna ask this then, and, because this is something that I've talked about in my talk and, and um, I, I feel like sometimes there's a perception with Ward County that just the way that they do things i- is I shouldn't say archaic, because they're not terrible, but it's, it's old.
It's not very polished either.
Polished, that might be the word that we're looking for. Because a- and it's not a cr- criticism of the people. I don't care what age you are, it, that's not, that's not what we're, I'm looking at. I'm just, the, just the way that things work, it's just, it feels like it's so hard to get involved. It feels like it's so hard to track down stuff. You, and part of it is they don't have an administrator, so it's really hard to find information and stuff like that. Um, i- is that something that you have seen as you've gone through this? Do you think there's actually things that could happen to help improve some of those things that might create more interest?
On uh, Tuesday, we had a, a all-service club forum and a similar question was posed. Um, my answer was, the city of Minot has a YouTube channel. I mean, everybody has a YouTube channel anymore. I think you have a YouTube channel. Everybody's got one. Um, the county doesn't. So the meetings are actually put on the, the initial website or the, the front page of the website. Um, the technology is probably, hmm, I don't wanna say subpar, but it is like somebody comes up to speak at the microphone. If they don't announce who they are, you don't know who it is and you can't see them. Sometimes the microphones aren't turned on. Um, when I got elected to city council, this was a long time ago. There was no live stream of the meetings. Uh, in fact, that was something I pushed for, same thing on school board. It didn't happen before I got on. Um, some, something I pulled, uh, pushed for and then um, when Derek Hackett came on, it was something that he and I kind of hashed out and, and that's kind of how it came about at the city side. And that's the same thing when I came on school board, there was no live stream meetings, um, and they do that now. Uh, I think there's some opportunity in the county, especially, I mean, like I said, just start a YouTube channel. There's an IT department.
Yeah.
It takes a little bit of technologies. It's gonna be a small investment upfront. I think that that would streamline things and make information a little more accessible. The website could probably use a little bit more um, streamlining as well. The meetings, as you were talking about, maybe feels old school. Uh, Robert's Rules of Order are, you know, the way that meetings should be run. Um, and while they, they are to some extent, sometimes I feel like it kind of is the Wild West, so.
That's fair.
You know, I, I hope to bring those things to the commission in the event that I'm elected.
Yeah, I think they put some of their videos on Vimeo, which come to think of it, just on the spot, that they have to have a subscription for that because of how much data that they're putting up in there. That's not free.
I don't know how much that costs.
Yeah, I have no idea either.
And isn't it free for YouTube?
Oh yeah, it's free for YouTube. Yeah, it, we were actually doing, because we're like, alright, we need to start watching these meetings and we struggled to find them. We finally found it and we're like, dude, we will save this link because I don't know if we can find this link again. Um, so i- it's an interesting thing how that is dated, um, but they got a beautiful building. And, and they beat Ward uh, City Minot to that. So, so that's maybe a, a plus in the bucket for Ward County. Um, let's see. So we talked about cuts, alright, and tha- that's fun to talk about, but what about the idea of actually getting an administrator for, for the Ward County? Is that something that you would be a fan of?
So I, I, I think so. And, and I, I approach this cautiously for a few reasons. Um, you know, a- a- an administrator of a political subdivision is, is definitely the highest paid person on the payroll. Um, I think there can be some efficiencies and probably some financial gains by having the right person. But the other side of it is recruiting that person.
Yeah.
Um, the talent pool for, you know, county administrators, city administrators is a small pool. So usually there is some financial obligation to get the right person. So while I think that it, it's definitely worth looking into, I'm not sure that I'm a hundred percent convinced that uh, that it has to happen. For the simple reason that uh, I'm, I'm not sure that it's gonna be a financial benefit. Uh, in the long term, I think it could be. I think, you know, from an employee standpoint, I think it would be important to talk with uh, department heads and some of the employees within the county to see what their thoughts are on it. Maybe even do some type of an anonymous poll. Because I would suspect there are some employees that would be very much uh, opposed to a county administrator. Um, and then there would be some that would really like to have, you know, that, that role filled.
So, and you've went and walked around these offices, I'm sure. You've met, you've already said you met Paul at the jail, met with him. And I'm sure you've met with others. It seems like sometimes when there is not that formal and there, there is leadership, there's five of them. And I'm sure that the chairman probably takes an interesting role, maybe more of a lead role in some of those relationships. Um, but within the people, do you feel, have you felt like there's been a natural like leadership, somebody that they look to, that's there on a daily basis?
Well, they have different departments. Each department has their own.
I get that.
And so I, I don't know, I don't know that I would say yes, that there is any one person that, you know, takes that natural lead essentially. I think each department looks to their department head um, for those things. Now with regards to the commissioners, you know, the, the challenge with that, and it doesn't matter, you know, like if you're on the council or the school board. Sometimes it's intimidating to reach out to those people. Some people have no problem at all. I mean, I've had many people show up at my door and have some very strong words for me. Um, but then there are people who are maybe less interested in having those types of communications or they feel intimidated. Um, so sometimes that, that administrator role might actually benefit those types of people.
Okay, let's switch gears a little bit. So I, I don't know, other than that Ward County and I haven't met many of my city council people outside of uh, official stuff. Is there plans that you have for potentially engaging more with the community that, communities that you will be helping with, being commissioner over?
Uh, I would like to, yeah. Um, so previously and, you know, the things that, there's a liaison board where you've get um, representatives from the city and the school and the park and the county and all of this. Um, I've always enjoyed that because you kind of hear what's happening within the different political subdivisions. As for the other communities, shoot, I mean, I, I already enjoy going out to o- other communities, you know, checking out what they have to offer. I would one hundred percent be excited to spend a couple of days in Kenmare just hanging out and see what else they, I, I do show up there from time to time. People may not realize it. I, I like to swing through there. But uh, you know, any of the smaller communities, for instance, Burlington, Berthold, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rice Lake.
Right, yeah. It goes everywhere.
Yeah.
Doesn't, Max is too far south, right? Uh, Max is right on the border. I can't think, I can't remember.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the map to see for sure.
I should know that question honestly. It's my bad. Um, but let me ask you this one and we're coming to a close, but um, for the future of Ward County, we talk about a lot of the now things, but and, and I guess looking at maybe updating some stuff is a futuristic question. But overall, as you look for the future of North Dakota, what are, or Ward County, what are some of the concerns that you, you kind of see that could be on the horizon? Stuff like big M buildings and stuff like that.
Well, that's such a moving target.
Yeah.
Um, the, you know, there's been talk of the, the Sentinel Missile Program coming into our area to revamp. And then there's also concerns, like honestly, the federal government at any time could put a pause on that based on, you know, the finances of the federal government. Um, but we still have to keep planning for that because as, as we know it today, that, that is coming down the pipe. And uh, we need to be planning effectively. You know, I talk a lot about planning as well when I do these things, but um, effective and uh, thoughtful planning is a big deal. Uh, specifically in the county, it also is within the city, but you can't just put, you know, roads and you can't put residential right next to industrial. You gotta kind of, that, think out what the long-term plan of the, the growth is. And I think we've got some pretty big growth coming um, to our area.
Right.
Specifically in the next ten years, if we structure things correctly. Um, and I think that could be very beneficial to all of us, uh, to bring in some additional money from, you know, other states and things like that. So long-term planning is a big deal, thoughtful, um, and um, responsible planning. Uh, road maintenance, um, and county roads specifically. Um, paving, if that needs to be done, snow removal, uh, safe bridges. Um, safety within, you know, the, the county for, you know, sheriff's patrol. You know, we, we are fortunate in Minot, we have the Minot PD that responds within town here, but you know, imagine if uh, if you live out in the country and your, your only mode of, you know, police support is Ward County and you call Ward County and it's twenty-five minutes before somebody's there. Um, you know, those types of things are important to county residents.
I know a crazy story.
What's up?
Couple of years ago, uh, we were temporarily living out of town. And on my way home, it was like ten, ten-thirty at night. I jumped on the hi- I was on highway, um, twenty-four, which I think is in Ward County still, it's right on the edge. Max is outside, twenty-four is in. Um, I hit a horse.
Oh wow.
Yeah, did not see that one coming. We thought it was a moose when we were hitting it because of the color of the fur and then we got out and realized it was a horse.
Were you guys okay? Cause that, that can be bad, like the, take the legs out, it can come through the window.
We were blessed because it, the car was gnarly, but, but we were alright. Um, my wife was pregnant, everything was fine. Um, so we were concerned. But yeah, we, the, the ambulance showed up. The fire truck showed up and then we had to wait for the police and we couldn't go until the police showed up. And, and it's, Ward County is the jurisdiction there. Um, and so it took a while for that to happen and so that's a definite concern and I tie this story to what you're saying. That's a definite concern for people, I'm sure and so those things that kind of get overlooked when you live in the city of Minot where we're at.
And ironically, you know, the city of Minot is the largest voting population. So you know, the, the voters of Minot, they're gonna elect, but and the unfortunate thing is the, the voters in the outlying areas probably don't have as many votes because of the city of Minot.
Yeah.
And the city of Minot residents don't think about that kind of stuff, because they call the, they call the fire department and they're within three, they're there within three minutes. They call the police and they're there within probably two.
Right.
You know, when you, when you're in the county and you're further out, you're, you're waiting a little bit and sometimes those minutes make a big difference.
Yeah.
And god forbid there be icy roads. You might be waiting an hour.
Right, right.
Or longer.
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, two thousand miles makes up Ward County. It goes out to uh, Sawyer. Obviously, Kenmare, we already mentioned that, down to almost, almost um, Max, just, just out north of Max. Um, alright, one other thing though, we talked a little about this beforehand. Ward County gets, because it's not because it's Ward County, but because it's the county, it gets random stuff dropped into its hat. Just random stuff that it shouldn't have. Well, it should have because it's right, but it doesn't feel like it should have because it feels so unnatural. The thing that we were talking about is somebody doesn't pay taxes inside of a city limits. That doesn't go to the city, the county steps in and takes care of that. Um, and something else, which we were talking about beforehand, but something I did wanna bring up, and that's with TIFs. Um, and that was a big topic a couple of years ago, um, of how that's handled and you whether or not the county is willing to give out that TIF as well. Something that, you know, it happened with the big M building, it's happened with other, other developments and that's great, but something that people just think of the city of Minot as being the driving force there, but really it's bigger than that. So what's kind of your perspective? I know those are very two different things. One is somebody be, well, they're, they have some co- commonality. Um, what, what's your thinking when it comes to TIFs, when it comes to some of these properties that just people stop paying taxes on and get turned over to you? Um, first off, TIFs, what, what's your viewpoint on those?
So um, a TIF, tax increment financing, uh.
It's a terrible thing.
Well, it's complicated and I think that there is, there's, we're talking about planning, you know, responsible, effective planning and I think that that the TIF is a tool in a toolbox and people have heard that before for, for planning essentially and for growth within a community. I specifically like the idea of a TIF uh, with regards to blighted property. I am not supporting, I'm not supportive of TIFs on undeveloped property or new development, but I do think it's effective on blighted properties of which the big M was one. And, and honestly, that, that building, if I remember correctly, was um, I think it was three years in arrears on its property taxes. So it was about ready to fall back on the residents of Ward County, which is also the city, uh, because city's in the county.
Yeah.
Um, and that building had its challenges with like asbestos abatement. When you talk about properties going back, you know, I, I live in the valley. Um, there was a lot of properties that uh, that, that kind of went backwards. In fact, there was one that was almost kitty corner from me and um, the building had fallen in on the property. The property was in terrible disrepair. Um, when I say property, I'm talking just the land. There was down trees, there was piles of dirt.
Right.
Weeds and overgrowth and things like that. There was a beehive or nest that it started. Um, but the property had been assumed by Ward County. So those calls had to go to the county. Uh, ultimately, the county ends up usually selling those properties for very little money to get them off their rolls. Um, but I, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't know why it falls back on the counties. It does when people decide not to pay those taxes. Um, and like I said, in this instance, it was literally just uh, some property that people walked away from after the flood. Uh, and with regards to TIFs, um, I think that there is a place for them. But I am more inclined to use that type of uh, financial investment tool with regards to blighted properties, of which we have blighted properties around town. It's redeveloping, getting those properties back, you know, to a functioning property that's you know, be able to be used for uh, you know, retail space or daycare space or whatever else the property can be used for. And then removing that, uh, the blight that's associated with it. Cause sometimes when you have these blighted buildings, it'll bring in some criminal behaviors and things like that. I think it's good to revitalize neighborhoods using some of those things. I do struggle with the Renaissance Zone. Um,
Okay.
I, I actually wrote a letter um, in support of getting rid of Renaissance zoning. Uh, people don't realize that. Tony Garrick, who was at the time a commissioner in Fargo, and I think it was Steve Markort and myself wrote one uh, in opposition of Renaissance zoning.
Nice.
Um, so, you know.
Why, why, why are you in opposition?
I don't like winning, picking winners and losers.
I, I think that's fair. So, so basically the Renaissance Zone, there's certain amount of blocks that a city can designate as Renaissance Zone and then beyond that, they don't get the Renaissance Zone funding.
No, well, the, the tax abatement essentially. And, and it's funny, my, my, my friends in the planning department are probably shaking their heads. Um, I've just never really been a friend or a fan of, of the, the Renaissance Zone program. Um, that's my personal thought process on it, but again, it stems back to uh, limited government.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the the TIF, I I was just thinking as I was asking that, and I don't know why I didn't tie this together because the same question came up at the forum that the Dakota did a couple of years ago. And it was in regard specifically to the big M building because it was just about to happen, whether or not, and I don't remember your answer on it. Do you remember your answer on it?
I think it was after it happened.
Yeah.
And I would almost, I would almost put money on it and we could probably re-watch it. It's probably going to be very similar than to what it is today.
But you, and you would have supported it. And 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 I think specifically with the big M building, like now the naysayers come out and say, this is why it shouldn't have happened because look what happened. The people left.
That that can happen with it. So there's a, there's a whole different ballgame there. You know, you're, you're talking private business that, you know, choices that were made at a private, private business level versus what can happen at, you know, a a city level or a, you know, whatnot. Um, I don't know that that you can say, hey, the people who supported that TIF made a wrong decision. Um, I think it's unfortunate what happened to that company.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of investors beyond the owners of that company, a lot of people who invested a lot of money who, you know, are kind of left holding the bag and I I feel for those people. Um, but, you know, we as a community have to figure out a re- a a new use for that building. It's not going away. I don't know what the long-term goal is or the long-term um objective, who's gonna buy it and and redo it. But um, i- it just can't stay the way it is right now.
I I agree that eh eh, life happens, but I I was going to make the point that even with that failure that people try to point to on it, it seems like it's still a success in that I I'm told that the asbestos is cleared out. So so there and that's one of the higher costs uh of going in, getting all fixed. So that's s- something really solid. But I'll ask you this on the TIFs, what kind of vetting process do you think that there should be done when it comes to a company that's asking for a TIF on a blighted property?
Well, you know, each one of them has to do individual, uh, there needs to be an individual application for every one of them.
Yeah.
And each individual political subdivision has the opportunity to decide if it works for them, right? So, you know, you've got your school board, you've got your park, you've got your city and you've got your county commissioners and each one of them can make a different call on how they want to support it as a group. And and the reality is, is every one of those, every one of those boards, commissions, uh councils, they have a diverse population.
Yeah.
So where one member may be fully in support of it, another may be fully in opposition of it. You end up kind of finding things in the middle. And so as long as they continue to come through in individual um, applications and they're scrutinized individually by those political subdivisions, and this is where it comes into, you know, the the general public. Unfortunately, the general public doesn't usually react to something till after it has happened.
And they know, they know the answers then.
Yeah, well, and they're not paying attention when it is happening. And I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody, but and it is hard sometimes to keep up with that. You know, everything that's going on.
Yeah.
But the general public needs to be engaged and um, maybe less reactive uh into the point where, you know, they hear something and rather than react, think, you know, is this true? I'm going to make a few phone calls. I want to hear a few different sides of this. Why did this happen? And then, you know, maybe, maybe you'll have a better understanding of where things are coming from and then you can share your viewpoint on it as well.
Right, right. So so general public, I agree, we need to more engage. And that's something that has been really highlighted a lot with the city council race earlier this year, um, and the school board race earlier this year. But Ward County is unique because they don't have a administrator. And so they have their meetings at nine AM, which most likely plays together because they need their uh department heads to be at that meeting. Um, in the middle, it makes sense for it to be the middle of the workday without the administrator. Uh, but that's also very difficult for for people to get into town and 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 be a part of the meeting. Do you think that it's worth looking at at a different time?
So that's that's a good question. Um, every, every entity that I've been involved with, we've had the same type of question. And, you know, maybe four o'clock's the wrong time. Maybe six o'clock is the wrong time. We're having supper at six o'clock. I'm having supper at six, right?
And.
Um, so the challenge is from, you know, from any one of the entities is most times the staff has to be there, right? And and some of those meetings, I mean, shoot, the city council had a five-hour meeting.
Yeah.
The staff's not getting paid extra to be sitting there during those five hours. So you have to be conscious of the employees as well. And historically, the turnout of people showing up to these meetings is very, very low. Um, so sure, maybe they should move the meeting to six o'clock. But that's probably going to, I mean, there's got to be some type of compensation for the employees. Maybe you give them time off earlier in the day so that they can stay later. Um, you know, I don't know what it is, but you move the meeting to six o'clock and and even the budget ones are later, but you move the meetings till six o'clock and nobody shows up. Was that really the right answer? I don't know if it was.
Right, right.
Um, is nine o'clock the best time? Shoot, I don't, I don't think so. Um, nine o'clock is a tough time, but I understand why it happens is because you know, we have to have employees accessible. They have to be able to get to the meetings so they can, you know, present on different things. Um, and and it all comes down to priorities as well. So if you make something a priority, you'll find time to get there.
Right.
You'll find time to pay attention and be engaged. So do they need to change? Maybe, maybe a shift in the time would make a difference. Um, but I I struggle with that because, I mean, I've sat through many of the budget hearings on on the different entities. And unfortunately, you see the same six to eight people show up. And and this is when you're talking about, hey, this is the budget for the year.
Right.
These are the biggest meetings. There's plenty of, you know, budget hearings up to that point. And you continually see six to eight people show up. You do see fifty or sixty people on social media. You know, giving their, you know, their thoughts and and things like that. But is moving the meeting the right thing? I don't know. I don't know if it is.
Yeah, it it, I think uh getting a YouTube channel might be the first step in the right direction and all that.
To, a hundred percent.
So this election will be different than the one a couple sec- uh, a couple of months ago and that your name's going to be on the ballot. Why should people vote for your name that'll be on the ballot in November?
Well, I, I mean, I uh, I'm not one of those that says, hey, I I I want you to vote for me. What I want people to do is I just want them to be engaged. I want them to, I want them to listen to your podcasts and listen to the commissioners. I want them to question something that they might hear and I want them to, you know, be more engaged. I want them just to plain vote. I I don't care if you vote for me.
Right.
I don't care if you vote for who you vote for. I just want you to get your butt down there and vote. Um, and I say that, I'm not a big fan of mail-in ballots. I know people think that's a big deal, but for me, it's not. But I I want people to be engaged. I want them to be um responsible citizens. There are people in this country who serve in our nation's military for us to have the ability to do these types of things. They don't make it home and uh it it's really an important thing. So why do they want them? I don't, I just want them to vote. If they feel like I'm the right candidate for them, so be it. If I get elected, I'm going to do the job. I'm going to be grateful. I'm going to listen to and be responsive to the people. Um, if I'm not their candidate, that's fine. Just vote for someone.
Sounds good. Eh, how should someone uh support you?
Um, so I've got a, I've got a social media page. Um, I gotta, I'm gonna have to cheat and look at the name.
Oh, that's alright.
Um, I think it's Miranda Schuler, Ward County. Let me look here.
I was gonna throw you a sidebar, sidebar question, but I won't. It was a joking question. But are you worried about election integrity? And the the only reason is why, that's another thing that falls into the count, into the Ward County uh a bucket and I not, I don't think we have a good, I don't think it's a big question for for Ward County. So I was just throwing you as this.
Yeah.
For fun.
So for 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 election integrity, you know, I think we are, man, are we blessed to live in North Dakota.
Yeah.
Um, I I honestly, you know, sometimes I like to go other places and I even, I even toy with the idea of maybe retiring in other places. But I sure love it here for a lot of reasons. You know, the fact that we don't have voter registration.
Mm-hmm.
With regards to voter integrity, I think North Dakota, we are, we are, we are in good shape compared to a lot of other places.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't, I don't necessarily worry about it much here. With regards to how you find me,
Yeah.
it's Miranda Schuler, candidate for Ward County Commission. It's on Facebook. I think if you search my name, you'll find it. Um, I post a little bit of stuff on there. People can ask me questions. Unfortunately, people aren't asking questions.
That's weird.
Getting as many questions as I normally do.
Is that overblown? Is it because it's Ward County, do you feel, or do you think it's because of a presidential race?
I think it's that. I think uh, uh unfortunately, I've never run a November election before. It's always been June. So, you know, the the focus is different.
Yeah.
This one, um, especially because it's a presidential election year, I feel like other things are kind of falling down. And so some, there's some contentious measures, measures as well.
We didn't even ask you about measure four.
Yeah, well, we did before. Um, but I think there's some, some other things that are kind of overshadowing some of these uh races. And and the interesting thing to me is, you know, people are so focused on who's going to be president, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, when the reality is, is you want, you want the most responsive person, you need to be looking at like your, your local government.
Yep.
And and even your state government, those are the people that are making the choices that impact your daily life.
Right.
The president isn't impacting if your, if your roads get plowed in town or to the, you know, your county roads or whatnot. They're not impacting, you know, the the things that are being put into your schools.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe on a federal level they are, but the reality is, is the people who are elected here locally, those are the most important elections that we should be even focusing on. Unfortunately, the media kind of shifts our focus to the the federal level.
Yeah, absolutely. I I agree with you there. I agree with you a lot. This is where the, you can actually feel the change that you're trying to enact.
The most difference.
Yep, absolutely. Well, thank you for coming on today.
Thanks for having me. It's been fun.
Yes. Thank you for watching this episode of Minot Matters here at the Dakota and brought to you by Shock Safe and Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. Be sure to follow us on Facebook, like and subscribe on YouTube. Be part of the Dakota community. Thank you for watching this video. Have a great day.